Clayton County observes March 2018 as Procurement Month. Whereas, the Clayton County Central Services Department has a significant impact on the quality, efficiency, and effectiveness of Clayton County Government through its centralized procurement system. And whereas, the Clayton County Central Services Department recognizes, supports, and practices the public procurement values and guiding principles of accountability, ethics, impartiality, professionalism, service, and transparency established by the National Institute of Governmental Purchasing (NIGP) as fundamental tenets of the public procurement profession. And whereas, the month of March has been designated as Procurement Month by the National Institute of Governmental Purchasing (NIGP), and purchasing organizations throughout the world engage in efforts during the month to inform the public about the important role performed by procurement professionals. And whereas, the Clayton County Central Services Department has scheduled a procurement open house on March 13, 2018, to further expand awareness of procurement functions and opportunities in Clayton County. And whereas, the Clayton County Central Services Department will host a Contract Log Workshop on March 14, 2018, to increase knowledge of basic formation, content, and principles of creating legal business relations. And whereas, the Clayton County Central Services Department will host a Proposal Writing Workshop March 21, 2018, to enhance small, local, women, and minority business knowledge in preparing responses to procurement solicitations. Now therefore, I Jeffrey Turner, Chairman, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2018 as Procurement Month in Clayton County, Georgia. I encourage all citizens to engage in special efforts during this month to recognize the importance of the role played by the procurement profession in business, industry, and government. In witness thereof, I have here to set my hand and call the Seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this sixth day of March in the year 2018. Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman. Clayton County Board of Commissioners recognize the work of the Divine Nine. Whereas, the National Panhellenic Council Incorporated, a collective body of the nine pioneering black Greek letter organizations, was formed on the campus of Howard University, May 10, 1930. Each of these organizations, rich in history, make up what is affectionately known today as the Divine Nine. They are Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated, Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity Incorporated, Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, Sigma Gamma Row Sorority Incorporated, and Iota Phi Theta Fraternity Incorporated. Since the inception of these nine organizations, membership in each has expanded globally. Their impact is widespread professionally and financially, as these organizations have contributed millions to improve communities, send students to college, and support other professionals in corporate occupations, entrepreneurship, mentoring, sponsorship, healthcare, social activism, and political awareness. While these organizations were established in an age when racial segregation and disenfranchisement plagued African Americans, none of the organizations discriminate on the base of race or religion. And whereas, members of the Divine Nine are active and hard at work in Clayton County, striving to fulfill their individual missions of service. The Pi Gamma Lambda Chapter of Alpha Phi Alpha leads a successful boys mentoring program at the Carl Rodenizer Recreation Center and hosts financial literacy workshops. The men of the Henry Clayton Chapter of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity recently donated heaters to senior citizens. The Atlanta Suburban Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority hosted an informational workshop on sex trafficking, and the East Point College Park Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta hosted a voter education workshop for teens. The local chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority serves Clayton County by partnering locally with Rainbow House, the House of Dawn, and the Clayton County Public Schools to provide service where needed. The Sigma Omega Chapter of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority hosted a panel discussion entitled Sisters Talk: Breaking the Silence. And the Omega Psi Phi Fraternity sponsors the Real Men Read Event at Huey Elementary School. The Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity offers scholarships to Clayton County students. These are just a few of each organization's work. And whereas, Clayton County is glad to have the members of the Divine Nine working to make the county better. Now, therefore, I Sona Singleton Gregory, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby honor and recognize the Divine Nine for the work they're doing in Clayton County, Georgia. In witness thereof, I have here to set my hand and call the Seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this sixth day of March in the year 2018. Sona Singleton Gregory, Commissioner, District One. Whereas, Khadijah Diggs is Clayton County's own woman in history. Khadijah was born in New Jersey and raised in New York. She has been a resident of Clayton County since 2002, where she trains and raises her family. And whereas, Khadijah competed in her first triathlon in 2012 as part of an initiative for her sorority, Gamma Gamma Chi Sorority, Inc. It was never her intention to compete in any additional races, but she fell in love with the sport. Since 2012, she has entered more than 40 events and successfully completed all but one of them. Khadijah is currently ranked in the top 5% of her group by Ironman Triathlon, Silver All-World Athlete. And whereas, Khadijah Diggs is also the first African-American woman to represent Team USA in long course triathlon, and the first Muslim to represent Team USA in any multi-sport event. She is also a 2018 USA Triathlon Ambassador, an honor bestowed upon only 44 individuals across the county. And whereas, she raced across the country and around the world this year, representing the United States, including Dubois United Arab Emirates, Havana, Cuba, Florida, Odense, Denmark, Ohio, and Arizona. And whereas, Khadijah Diggs is a mother, project manager, and a triathlete. Her mission is to promote a positive image of Muslim women and Islam in general through sport. Her mantras are #NeverGiveUpOnYourself and #DreamAndGrind. She states, "I pray that I make my children, my family, and the community proud of my efforts, whether I finish first or last. I pray that people who have never met a Muslim see me as not only a fierce competitor and sportswoman, but a decent human being." Now, therefore, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, I Felicia Franklin Warner, Commissioner, do hereby call all citizens to join me in recognizing Team USA Triathlon Champion Khadijah Diggs for her exceptional athletic triumphs. In witness thereof, I have here to set my hand and call the Seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this sixth day of March in the year 2018. Felicia Franklin Warner, Commissioner.
Now, today in honor of National Women's History Month, Clayton County recognizes Michelle Fouqua, engineer for Georgia Power Company. Michelle W. Fouqua is the Metro South Engineering Supervisor with Georgia Power Company. She is responsible for all engineering and operational activities in the Jonesboro, Georgia, Hartsfield-Jackson Airport area. Since joining Georgia Power in 1999, she has held multiple leadership distribution planning supervisory and maintenance engineering supervisory positions. Whereas, Michelle has held positions of senior engineering, assistant to the general manager, distribution operations, and distribution engineer. She has industry experience that started at FPL Group and includes, if y'all don't know, that's Florida Power, right? Group and includes utilities, consultants, EDI consulting engineers, and New York Life Insurance Company. And whereas, Michelle has gone above and beyond academically to hold multiple degrees, Master of Business Administration, Master of Divinity from Liberty University, and the Bachelor of Science in Mechanical Engineering from North Carolina State University. Michelle is a candidate for her Doctorate of Ministry at Luther Rice University and Seminary. She is also a graduate of Leadership Clayton. And whereas, Michelle Fouqua has a passion to serve, by for helping people live a successful, abundant, and purposeful life. She is the founding pastor of Living Waters Church International in Jonesboro, Georgia. She was ordained an Elder in 2009 at Spread the Word Church Ministries. She is the founder and president of Success in Motion, Inc., and God's Chosen Woman, Inc. Both are nonprofit organizations seeking to improve the lives of families through systematic, holistic development. And whereas, Michelle enjoys reading, writing, mentoring, and quality family time. Finally, and most importantly, she is married to Louis Fouqua III and has three sons, Louis, Daniel, and Christian. Now therefore, I Felicia Franklin Warner, Commissioner, on behalf of Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby call all citizens of Clayton County to join me in recognizing and honoring the woman that got the power back on at the airport. In witness thereof, I have here to set my hand and call the Seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this sixth day of March in the year 2018, and she live in District Three.
The board will now consider the consent agenda with the exclusion of Items D and Items L.
Okay, at this time, I take a recommendation to accept the, or approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
I think, yes, there is a question. And since it's a little late, and the TND Director just walked out, can someone give, or Mr. COO, can you give us the estimate of what it would be per mile? The actual estimate per mile? Either you or the CFO to be able to answer that question.
Let's talk my talk.
There he is.
Question at hand, and no pun intended, because your whole arm is messed up. How much is, we're talking about sidewalks, per mile? Can you tell us roughly how much it costs to put a mile worth of sidewalk in, concrete cost?
That's a very difficult question, because it depends on what road you're putting it on.
We're talking about Garden Walk Boulevard.
I can guess off the top of my head, but we really appreciate the opportunity to go back and give you a more thorough answer tomorrow. Sidewalk varies because it's not just the concrete. It's, you end up having to put drainage pipe in the ground and redo the whole shoulders of the road. So it varies depending on which location. Garden Walk Boulevard requires a little bit more work than we originally anticipated because we ended up having to retrofit a bunch of driveways along that stretch of road. Therefore, we had to take out more of the concrete curb and gutter and provide more connections to make it a thorough project.
Any other questions?
No, could you just give us on average? I mean, a ballpark figure?
On a mile, $400,000, $500,000. I mean, per foot, we're paying $20, $30 per foot, off the top of my head, necessaries for the concrete that lay down.
No, I'm good. Can I just make this statement?
Thank you, Ms. President.
Can we just make sure that we're prepared, please? I'm so sorry. If there's something on this agenda, we need to be prepared to answer these questions, no matter whose district is in, between a CFO, somebody, we need to be able to give good information to the public.
All right, here are no other questions, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, is unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And the next item is L. This is a central services item. Carol Rogers.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. I have one item. It's a recommendation for governmental and affiliated entity purchases for two 2018 Ford ambulances and equipment utilizing the Florida Sheriff's Association State Contract. The recommendation is to utilize this contract for the purchase of these items from 10-8 Fire, Inc., located in Forsite, Georgia, in the total amount of $482,816. Funding is available through the Vehicle Replacement Fund. The request is for you to approve the recommendation, authorize the chairman or his designee to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract, and authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget accordingly. That's all I have.
All right, is there a motion? Commissioner Evans has made the motions, there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Oh, I have a question. Is this the correct figures? There was some reason we were taking it separately.
Right, exactly. When we actually put it in the system, we did not put the information for the equipment. So this is a correct amount.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, is unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And the next item is L. This is a public hearing on Resolution 2018-19, County Attorney Hancock.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, the board will need to conduct a public hearing. It has been properly notified, noticed, and published, and the issue is the potential abandonment of 20,434 square feet of College Street.
Okay, at this time, we're entering into a public hearing. Mr. Hatch, or anybody else who would like to speak on this matter, is free to come up and take the voting.
Thank you again for the opportunity to speak. I'm not as prepared as I would like to be for this, because I happen to be on vacation for the two weeks immediately after this notification went out only two weeks ago, so.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hatch, if you could, please state your county of residency.
Pardon me?
Your county of residency.
I'm a resident of Elbert County, Georgia. I am an official of the IATSC Local 479, which is a labor union, and we own the property immediately east of this piece of property you're talking about abandoning and then disposing of. So we do have a definitely vested interest in that property and what happens to it, since it runs the length of our property there on CW Grant Parkway. I don't have any idea what the plans are, haven't seen any plans, haven't seen any disposition, haven't seen any information about what's going to happen with that roadway. There's a roadway that is on the other side of CW Grant and a light that goes there. I don't know whether that light's going to still function on that side of the property. The county owns another lot that's adjacent to that property that you're talking about. I don't know what you plan to do with that. So there's a lot of information that we don't have, and I believe at a meeting a couple of months ago, our Realtor, or one of the Realtors involved in some dealings that we're doing, asked the county engineer and was told that there was nothing going on there. So we really need more information.
Well, I invite you to contact our CEO, Ms. Dietrich-Stanford there, and he'll be able to give you some more insight.
Is there going to be action on this tonight?
Yes, sir. We're going to vote on it after.
Okay, so getting information's not going to do me much good if you're going to already have done something before I get here.
Well, it would do you good from the standpoint of enlightening you, enlightening you as to what's going on out there. I would still think that you would want to know that.
Okay.
But that's entirely up to you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak on this issue? Or this hearing? Anybody else like to speak? Mr. Hancock.
Mr. Chairman, Resolution 2018-19 is a resolution to abandon approximately 20,434 square feet, .469 acres of right-of-way formerly known as College Street, to authorize the conveyance, the abandoned right-of-way to the adjacent owner, to authorize the chairman to execute any and all documents relating thereto, and otherwise to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution, and for other purposes.
Okay, before we go out, before we take a vote on that, we need to go out of the called meeting.
Public hearing.
Public hearing, I'm sorry.
You're right, I'm sorry.
Public hearing. Is our motion go out of public hearing? Close of public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Close in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, is unanimous. Going back, is there a motion for the abandonment of College Street? Get to the question. I'll make the motion, is there a second? Is there a second? No second, okay, so a fail is due to a lack of a second?
Resolution 2018-21 is a resolution amending a moratorium in the acceptance, on the acceptance of applications for development of building permits for review and consideration by the Clayton County Department of Community Development as they relate to existing proposed properties within tax allocation District Number Five, Mountain View, in Clayton County, to be in effect from enactment through and including December 31, 2018, to adopt an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. As you probably know, the purpose of this resolution is twofold. One, to extend the moratorium that you previously enacted, but also to remove from that moratorium the renovation, rehabilitation, repair of existing buildings in that district. There were some issues raised with regard to existing buildings, and the breadth of the moratorium was such that it would prohibit, for example, an existing party that had a building there from renovating it for a new tenant. And this removes that renovation, or that exception, from the moratorium.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? I have a question. So not only does the moratorium stop new construction from happening, but it also stops companies from renovating the.
No, sir. It previously, it prohibited renovation. That is excluded from this moratorium. So if they have, if Highwoods has an existing building up there and they need to retrofit it for a new tenant, they can do that.
Gotcha. Any other questions? All right, hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, is unanimous.
We need an executive session, Mr. Chairman, on litigation in real estate.
Mr. Chair, before we go to that board appointment, did you remember to recognize, we have some elected officials in the audience?
All right, before we do that, I think the last item is for appointment to the Animal Control Board to fill the expiring term of Miller, Miller Hall, three-year term expiring on March 12, full board appointment. Are there any recommendations? Any recommendations? Hearing none. We'll hold it, Madam Clerk, until the next meeting before we take a motion to go into executive session. I definitely welcome our city elected officials who have came to join us and appointed officials, Mayor DeTar, Janelle Bridges, Larry Ferguson, Dorothy Dean, and I think I'm missing somebody else.
Commissioner Charles Russo was here.
Larry Ferguson from City of Marl, Sylvia Riddick.
Ms. Knight.
Yes, yes, Ms. Knight. And who else am I missing? Jonesboro, City of Jonesboro, all right, Alfred Dixon, and Ricky, Ricky Clark. Good to see you, Rick.
Commissioner Russo of Fayette.
Russo's gone though, is he? We had a commissioner from Fayette County here, Charles Russo. So thank y'all for coming and sharing your afternoon, your evening with us. It's always a pleasure to see you. Now, with that being said, I'll take a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
There's a second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, is unanimous. All right, motion to reconvene.
motion moved.
Second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, is unanimous. Mr. Hancock.
Mr. Chairman, we have for your approval agreements and releases of claim for unpaid wages for 341 current and former employees of the Police and Sheriff's Department arising from a matter that we've been negotiating for some period of time. I have copies of each of those to file with the clerk, and the process that will be followed, there remain about a dozen that we're still working on. But the process that will be followed, if you approve these agreements, is that there will be a lawsuit filed by consent, and a judge will also approve these agreements in order that we get the protection of, under the federal law, the full protection of the settlement. All I'm asking you to do tonight is to consider and approve these 341 settlement agreements so that we can resolve this case, or begin, move forward to resolve this case.
Is there another? Okay, I'm going to take a second. I think there's something else, or no?
Sir.
Is there a motion on this?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second? Any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, is unanimous.
Second item, Mr. Chairman, would be to request that the board authorize the conveyance of the 17-plus acres off of Walt Stevens Road that was acquired from the. that was acquired from the FDIC from the county to the Development Authority in order that the Development Authority might pursue further economic development and use that property for that purpose.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, there, please.
Any questions? Here and now, those in favor, aye.
Aye. Nay.
It's four of one, it passes.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, on another matter that I apologize to the commissioner that I didn't deal with earlier. But let me put it on the record, what we're doing here for her, and we're going to look again. It has everything we need to do. It has come to Commissioner Warner's attention that there was a matter approved by the board two months ago involving the retention of an insurance brokerage firm. And she asked, I remember she asked a number, two meetings ago, not two months ago, pardon me. She asked a number of questions regarding who all was involved, going to be involved in that process. Did not get answers. Since the last meeting, she has learned that, in fact, a company that would have created a conflict for her is involved in that insurance program process, which, had she known that, she would have abstained for cause. And she had asked, and what I'd ask that you do is to have the clerk place that on the record. She voted against it, so her vote would not have impacted in any way. But because she has learned that, she just wants to make sure the record clearly reflects that she's brought that to the board's attention. I don't think that it is necessary to bring that matter back up and vote on it again, but I believe the record can reflect. And I would ask the board to vote to authorize the clerk to reflect that information on the agenda with regard to that resolution.
Okay, so I'll place that in form of motion to authorize, are we doing that?
Yes, sir, if you do that.
To authorize this board to accept the information into the amendments. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye. Aye. Oppose. It's unanimous.
Did I have to abstain from that? I have to abstain.
One abstention. Mr. Edmondson, you have a motion?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion that we reconsider Item 2018-19.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous. Vote on the original item now, right? Jack?
Yes, sir.
Need to vote on the original item now. Is there a motion? To, what's the, where's the number?
Twenty eighteen dash nineteen. I make a motion to approve Item 2018-19, the abandonment of the property.
Of College Street. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Commissioner Hamburg.
Was this the one involving the hearing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we have had the hearing?
Yes, ma'am. You've had the hearing. Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
Nay.
Four of one, it passes. Any other business? All right. Take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second. Those in favor, aye. Oppose. It's unanimous.